Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session for the city of Casa Grande. First item on our agenda, is Jeff not going to be here? Is he, did you get a hold of him?
He is not contacted this morning, so I anticipate he'll be here in a minute.
Okay. You might want to make sure he knows it started at 5:30. All right, tonight's first item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion on the proposed workforce housing project in our downtown area by Chicanos Por la Casa. Mr. Raines?
It's actually going to be me, Mayor.
You're going to start, Mackenzie?
Yes, sir. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited tonight to have Chicanos Por la Casa here with us to do a presentation. Getting to this point to even have the presentation tonight has been the culmination of an effort that's taken place over the last two years. I think that we released a RFI back in 2019 that was approved in 2020, and they were the developer that ended up responding to that, and they were the ones that were chosen. So throughout that timeframe, city staff and CPLC team have put a significant amount of time and effort in rezoning the parcels associated with the project for higher density and zoning, conducted environmental site assessments and surveys of all sites, which also resulted in the cleanup of one of the sites that had contaminated lead-impacted soil. And so that took place at the end of last year. And then preliminary project design conceptualization and finance planning has been conducted from CPLC. And then both parties have been engaged in development agreement design writing and negotiations. And then, so before I wrap up here, because I know we have a pretty stacked study session this afternoon, I just wanted to have a huge shout out to internal staff, Paul Theis, Jaclyn in the Planning Department, and then also Mark in the Attorney's Office and Brett. Without having a unified effort from our city staff, this project has already been delayed through COVID and other circumstances. So it's, without all of us working together to get to that point, it would have been delayed even more than it has been. And then also a huge shout out to Chicanos Por la Casa as well, because they've stayed diligent throughout this process and worked with us through negotiations as well. So while it is still educational and nothing has been approved at this point, obviously, before it comes to you guys at a council, an actual council meeting, I just wanted to preface and say that first. So without that being said, I don't want to steal any more of their time, and I'd like to invite their team to come up, whoever's going to be representing and presenting tonight.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, thank you for having us this evening. We are very excited to be here. We do have a short presentation that we'll be going through, and at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask those, and we'll try to evade them as best possible. That didn't go over very well, but that's okay. First of all, I'd like to introduce you to our team. This is the development team over at Chicanos. It comes from our Vice President to our Facilities and Land Asset Managers. The individuals that are here this evening with us are Evelyn Guerrero, who's our Real Estate Development Director, myself, I'm the Advocacy Manager for Chicanos, and I do the community outreach for our group. We have Scott Wolfsky, who's our Project Manager. And then to my right is Michael Smithson, who's our Senior Project Manager. We are broken down into four integrated pillars. Chicanos is the fourth largest nonprofit in the state of Arizona. One of those pillars is affordable housing. Our mission is to empower individuals. We believe in hands up, not hands handouts. So one of the things that is our focus is how do we empower individuals? And one of those is through affordable housing and especially workforce housing, because there is such a demand for that right now. We currently have four real estate developments. The first is what we call our Apartments at 25th Street and Bell. I'm going to hand over the explanation of the others with to Mr. Smithson. He's a little more familiar with those.
Sure. Thank you, Fidelis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
If you could talk into that microphone, we do have people on recording that are watching it live, so it helps them to hear.
Sure.
Thank you. And you can move that microphone if it helps.
I'm a roamer, but I'll try to stay polite.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Also, thanks again to Mackenzie, especially and the rest of the city staff and the city Attorney's Office for all their help and their hard work in this process so far. So like Fidelis said, our mission at CPLC is empowering lives. And one of the ways that we do that through real estate development is through the development of affordable and workforce housing. Up on the screen is four projects that we currently have under development. 25th and Bell Apartments, Pueblo Apartments, and Vista Village Apartments are all in the Phoenix area, in Phoenix. And Nueva's Vista's Town Homes is a first-time homebuyer opportunity in Mesa, Arizona, in their downtown area that's currently undergoing a revitalization project. So CPLC, obviously, we're, we try to empower people through the development of real estate as one of our many ways of empowering people. But we don't just develop and leave. We're in the community long after the development is complete through our management affiliate, Tiempo Property Management, who manages all of our properties and stays to manage throughout the life of the property. This is just a quick timeline. I believe everyone on the council was able to get a copy of the presentation beforehand, so I won't, excuse me, I won't spend too much time, but just a quick overview of all the hard work that's gone into this process so far. And just a quick illustration of where these five sites are located. Just to remind everyone here, four of these sites are located immediately adjacent, the railroad and downtown. One of the sites is located on Third Street on the north side of downtown. This slide offers a conceptualization of what some of these apartments might look like. We expect we can get somewhere around 176 units across the five properties with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom floor plans. This slide, the bottom half of this slide is a chart that's published by the Arizona Department of Housing, and it illustrates the income limits and the typical allowable rents for projects that use the same type of financing that we'll be using on this project. These, this project will target people making between 40% and 60% of the area median income, as calculated by HUD. And you can, so that's the top three rows of that chart on the bottom half. These income levels are typically consistent with salary and wage levels for hospitality workers, for K through 12 teachers and school, school staff, for first responders, police recruits, firefighters, EMTs, detention officers, really the bedrock of many of our communities. What two or three years ago, we all refer to as the essential workers. If you take a look at the right-hand side of that chart on the bottom half of the slide, and just keep in mind some of those rents, you can see that as we move on to the next slide, those rents are much more affordable than the current market rents here in the Casa Grande area, which have risen significantly over the past several years. This chart is from a company called CoStar, which is a real estate data collector. And they are the company behind Apartments.com, so they have a very good pulse on what market rents in a given area are. And then finally, we just wanted to give you a quick, a quick representation of what our path forward on this project will look like. We currently have $500,000 in our pocket, ready to spend on some of those third-party reports that will be used in the development and design of the project whenever a purchase agreement is able to be signed. We also received close to $1 million in home funds that would go into funding this project as well. And then, once that purchase agreement is signed, as you can see, we begin our community outreach right away, which Fidelis handles, and I'll let him speak to what he does there.
One of the, excuse me, one of the things that Chicanos prides itself is that we not only want to be in the area or in the neighborhood, we want to become part of the neighborhood and part of the community. We have what's called a good neighbor policy, and it is comprised of several different aspects. First and foremost, as the process goes, moves along, we try to do as much direct communication with the residents, the surrounding residents as possible. For example, we had a zoning amendment in the city of Phoenix that we needed on one of our projects. And what I did is I literally walked over 100 of the homes for the residents. I gave them my direct card, my direct cellphone number, and I passed out flyers notifying them that I would be on the site for two days to answer any of their questions. So we did, the photograph you see here are some of the neighbors engaging with me, asking me questions about the development, and then asking me questions also about the amendment. The other photo that you see here is with another lady who could not be here today. Her name is Lisa Gonzalez, who's also part of our team. This was for the residences on Main. These are going to be our market rate apartments at the entryway going into Mesa. And again, we were out in the community. We were there to answer any questions regarding the residences on Main, so that we have that direct communication with the neighbors and with the community. The other aspect, and I consider it one important aspect, is as I get my information out there, we also have an asset manager whose name is Tony Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez and I are both bilingual. Once a property comes over into our control, we are very diligent in maintaining the properties. We are, we, Mr. Sanchez is responsible. He contracts out with the individuals that are necessary to clean the properties. We work with city inspectors and also with city officials. If we have any transients, any challenges with transients, or we don't want any of the vegetation to get out of control. So we do try to be good neighbors, as the policy suggests, and that really is what we want to be. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be part of the community. Everyone in this room, or anyone in the neighborhood, can have my direct cellphone number, and I'm available 24 hours, seven days a week. I may pocket dial you from time to time, like I did the mayor last week, so I took up about a minute of his voicemail, I think. But I am available anytime, and again, we are both bilingual, and we're here to serve. So that's what we do as far as community outreach. If any of the council members or the members of the public have any suggestions, we're open to those, and we'll accommodate them best we can.
So now we'd, we'd like to open it up to questions from the council. If you'd, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those to the best of our ability today.
Great. I have just a couple of comments and then a question for my, for myself. I did attend the grand opening of your Nuevo Vista's Town Homes in Mesa. It was a beautiful project. I mean, it really kind of converted some of their, the blighted downtown area into a really nice first homeowner townhomes, and they're three-story townhomes. They were beautiful. You guys did a nice job on that. I'm excited, because we've been talking about CLPC for, or CPLC for a while, and trying to get these, this properties that we have, that the city owns on the south side, which has been a number of things, Life on Main and several other things. And so it's exciting, and hopefully, we're going to move quickly on this and get this project going. I think it's well overdue, and we certainly would like to see this happen. The question I have, and also make a small note too, that you're going to be using this low-income housing tax credit, which most people don't know what, what the LIHTC stands for, but that's what it stands for. And it's, it's funding that helps keep the pricing of the rent down. And a builder agrees to X number of years to keep it at that rate. And then they have the option to take it out of that if the market so desires, which happened here in Casa Grande. And it's one of the reasons why we've lost some of our affordable housing, is that the builders had that program in place, and then their timeframe came up, and there was such a small, or I should say, an overneed for apartments that literally we lost that affordable housing. So it's great to see this come back. You guys also are helping us with some small business lending with your Prestamos program as well. So we're excited to see that, working with the Chamber of Commerce on that. So I'm very much aware of CPLC or Chicanos Por la Casa and all the things you guys do for the community, and we appreciate you being here. So just wanted to say that. And I did have one question. You didn't mention it, but I know it's kind of part of this project, but the Shaughnessy House and the Mission, comments on that, how we're going to incorporate it, are we going to incorporate it? It's kind of all in that area.
Yeah, Mayor, so I'll go ahead and answer that. So we originally kind of investigated that in the first part of this agreement, but because of the lenders and things that they're using, that was kind of a worry for them to put it in this original agreement. So that's going to be something that will happen in Phase Two of this project, because some of the initial studies that they conducted basically showed that they needed to have that density available in that space to kind of entice other entities to come over and take over those buildings. We had some original meetings with a food court vendor out of Tucson and stuff like that to kind of investigate whether or not they wanted to go in there at that time, but they decided not until we have more investment in these.
All right. Well, I don't, I don't want to lose that, because those are two key historic pieces for our city, and you're, and you're all around it. So I mean, it, it is part of that block, right? So I mean, they're, they're not going to go away, and so I just want to make sure you keep that top of mind.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the question. So our colleague Lisa Gonzalez, who was in the photo on the last slide with Fidelis here, her role at CPLC is business development, and she's been working very hard with, on, on these, those two buildings, connecting with potential users, potential, who would, who may be interested in going to those, going into those buildings. So we definitely still very much have intention of making that part of the project. Like Mackenzie said, the main reason for separating that from the housing project is, is primarily to relieve any confusion or concerns on the, the part of the light tech investors and lenders.
Okay. Just keep it on the top of your list.
It definitely is, yes, sir.
And then, I know we had, one of our past planning and zoning commissioners had, had given me a letter. So his input was that as you develop the design, which we're not in the actual design phase of that project, obviously, this is just a study session, but as you move forward, keep, keep in mind kind of our Hispanic heritage here, and, and maybe keep that in the back of your thoughts in terms of potential design work on this project and what it might look like from a, actually, a design standard standpoint. That was, that was his primary comment that he wanted to make, and, yeah, because we are 40-plus percent Hispanic here, and it is some of our heritage, so you just want to make sure that that's kept in mind as we move forward with this project. Fellow council members? Lisa?
Just to comment, well, first of all, I know I saw you all when you were coming in, and I was, I was so excited to see you were on the agenda today to present the status. You know, I'm so excited to see Chicanos Por la Casa come into our community. I have experience, and when I worked in the Phoenix area back in the day when, when Pete Garcia was running your organization. And, and so I, I know firsthand the partnerships that you establish and the collaboration, and so I'm thrilled. I know back in 2019, I sat in the meeting with you guys when you first came in, and of course, when we, we met with your finance group on the lending. But I, I think this, I mean, it's a, it's a great opportunity. I think these lots are perfect for, for this type of development. So I think it, I'm just really excited for the partnership that you bring to our community. And, and Mackenzie, thank you so much, and on our staff for just keeping on this. I know it was back in 2019, and like you said, Mayor, it kind of.
I've been working on this for a while.
I know. I was like, okay, what's going on? You know, so, and Mackenzie, I know.
I ask that question every week. Larry's getting tired of hearing from me.
But, but really, I'm, I'm really excited to see this, and I know what a great organization you are and how you serve the communities you're in. And so I really, really look forward to you coming into our community.
Thank you, Lisa. Donna?
Well, first of all, thank you, because, you know, your reputation is stellar in the, the Phoenix area, and so I'm really excited that you're here. I'm excited about the design. I especially am excited about your good neighbor policy. And I think that with anything that happens in our community, we want everybody to know what's going on and be very transparent, and to be there and to be vocal and to have opportunities for people to ask questions. You're meeting them where they're at, and I think that's really important for our community. I will say the only, the only thing that has been brought up to me is there's been some concerns regarding foot traffic because of the railroad area down there. And so that's the only, and it wasn't a negative comment. People are just curious about what that's going to look like, because, you know, obviously, we want people to go downtown. We love our historic downtown, and we want people to be there, but we want them to be safe when they're coming to and from that area. So that was the only comment. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and if I could, Ms. Councilwoman, the, the slides we showed, the design is still very conceptual in nature, so we, we do have an opportunity to incorporate things like honoring the Hispanic heritage of Casa Grande and making sure that as we work with the city and the Planning Department, issues in terms of foot traffic on our site will be addressed. We've had a very good relationship with Mackenzie and Stephen and their team in terms of discussing the rest of the revitalization work that the city is trying to address in downtown and how we might be able to coordinate that.
Some of the Life on Main had like a pedestrian bridge over the railroad that, which would obviously improve safety. So, and those are things I think we can probably get grant money for as well. So those are some of the things we need to look at to try and help your project. So, in fact, I know Maricopa received a grant to put a foot, a bridge, a pedestrian bridge over their section of, of the Union Pacific. It is a major rail line, so it's, it's not like it's a quiet rail line. It's a double-tracked, and it's busy. So that's going to be an important aspect to Matt's point. So, any, any other comments that you want to make?
A couple of questions. Some of the concerns been raised to me is, you know, like this is Section 8 housing or this. But it looks like you guys have worked through this many times before. How do you combat that? You know, the stereotype of that, and how do you keep your properties looking nice and, and, you know, being quality places to live?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start off with, with saying that this, this project specifically really is targeting that 40 to 60% of the area median income, which is above the, the Section 8 level. It's really more workforce housing. The, the other thing that, that we do, and Fidelis really does a great job of it, but interfacing with the community and the neighbors and, and really educating who is, who is living here. And it's, it's really our neighbors that are already in our community. They're just paying more than rent, more in rent than they can really, many people can afford. So it's, it's our teachers, our firefighters, our first responders and 911 dispatchers. They're already in our community. It's not bringing, you know, new people from, you know, some scary place. They're already here. They're our, our neighbors. We already like them, and we want them to be here. And so Fidelis does a great job interfacing with our neighbors as, as the project moves along.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's exactly was what I wanted, you know, so people knew that it was
Right.
a different type. It's workforce, because you look at the rent rates on there. I mean, they're, some of them upwards of $1,000 a month. It's not, I mean, inexpensive by any means, you know, but.
It's not $500 a buck.
Yeah.
And, and if I could add, Mr. Councilman, regardless of, of income source for, for all the different projects we work on, we do have properties in our portfolio up in Phoenix that do include some of those, those Section 8. Regardless of income source, all of our tenants do still have to pass the, the screening criteria of our, our management company, Tiempo. So there's, there's still a screening. We're not just letting anyone walk in the door.
Thank you. Yeah, because it just has a negative connotation, but I know that you guys manage it well, and it's, you know, it's going to be, and you guys own the properties.
Right.
So a couple of other things, as I saw some.
They don't build it and walk away.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. But the other thing I saw is, I don't know if it worked on these particular ones, but on that one project, you had some, some commercial space downstairs. I don't know if that would work here, but at some point, maybe some project like that downtown. But the other important part to know is, is once these properties are taken off, out of the government's ownership, then they're taxed, then they go back in the tax rolls. So that's, that's one benefit. And also, we've always talked about our downtown, the life down there. One way to get that really kick-started again is to have people move down there. So they're walking around, they're going to the restaurants, you know, then that brings more restaurants. more restaurants and more stuff as well. So, this is kind of a, a good thing to help, help with that as well. So, we appreciate it and we look forward to hearing more about it. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fidelis. Evelyn. Is Scott here too? I only saw the three of you.
Yep.
Oh, there he is, hiding in the back. Okay. Well, thank you all for, for being here and thank you for your presentation. Anything else, Larry, on that topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think the next topic is our graduation certificates in Leadership Academy. So, I think we're going to bring, oh, you need, need a minute? Well, then let me, I'll give a little recap. I don't have to do it down there. The Leadership Academy is something that we do, the city of Casa Grande has done every year for, how many years now?
Two thousand and three.
So, since two thousand and three.
Twenty years.
I know I was in the class of fifteen, I think.
Two.
And Donna was two. Matt?
Yes, I went to it.
But he doesn't remember what year. Anyway, a lot of us have gone through it. It's a great opportunity to really learn about your city. If you haven't signed up for it or haven't done it, I would highly recommend it. It takes you through everything from where your wastewater goes and how it's treated to how your police and fire operate and how your city operates, from your city manager to accounting, to our HR, our community services, streets. You even get to, if, if it's done correctly, or at least I think I got to go out to the, to our dump, which is actually a pretty fascinating.
Landfill.
Landfill, I'm sorry. The landfill. It's like, you don't call it a sewer treatment plant anymore. You call it wastewater treatment. So, but it's really every aspect of your city and, and where your, where your dollars go and how it is managed. So, it's very, it's fascinating, actually, if you, if you're any bit of a geek in terms of how your city runs, it's a, it's a worthwhile, you know, process. And it's six weeks. So, you know, we want to make sure we encourage everybody, if you do sign up for it, you attend all six weeks. Because if you miss a week, you miss a big chunk of the information. Are you ready?
Ready, Mr. Mayor. If you and the council will join us down here. And we'll be able, in a position to offer your congratulations to our graduates this year. Twenty twenty-three marks the twentieth anniversary of the founding, the start of our Leadership Academy. We missed a couple of, a couple of years because of COVID, but it's been, it's been a great experience and we've got a lot of graduates run through our program, including these tonight. So, if y'all will just come in here, we're going to bring our graduates through here. And you'll each have an opportunity to extend a handshake of congratulations. And then what I'd like to do, we're going to go in alphabetical order and after you come through and get your certificate and, and your logoed shirt, if you would stand over here on this side, after we're finished with the presentation, we're going to have a picture with you and the mayor and council. And then we'll have the mayor and council go back up and want to get a picture of you all in our graduating class, okay? So, it was a, a seven weeks session and with two optional sessions, one being the, the mayor's State of the City event and the second being an optional facility tour to kind of take you behind the scenes of places that you might not otherwise be there. And we're going to call this our twenty twenty-three Spring Session, because we're already making plans to, for the twenty twenty-three Fall Session. This is because of the number of individuals that we had who were interested in being a part of this. We were not able to accommodate all that wanted to be a part. We had the biggest class we've ever had for our Spring Session, but we're going to be setting up time for the Fall Session and opening that up. And we'll be starting with those individuals who applied to be in the Spring Session, but were not able to be accommodated. And then we'll see what we have from there. So, to, to those joining us at home, just have to keep in, keep in, keep watch on our website. And anyways, my, my name is Scott Barber. I'm the Human Resources Director for the city. It's been my pleasure and my privilege to partner with Heather Kennedy and her team from the Public Information Office to, to conduct this year's session. They handled the logistics and I got to be the fun part of hosting. And I can assure you, as our departments presented their information, they were delighted to be able to share all of the details of what they do and how they do it and involve some of their staff as well. So, it's a great exchange and opportunity for us to be able to tell all of you, all of the, all of the great things we think that we do for you as citizens and taxpayers in our community. What we'd like to do is your name is called, if you would come forward and Heather's going to bring your certificate shirt up here. And then we'll go through that way and go from there. And hopefully I'll pronounce everybody's name right. So, first we have Tabitha Avery. Next, Butch Helya. Okay, we knew there were a couple of individuals that couldn't be here this evening, so we'll make sure they get their shirt and their certificate. And I'm assuming Lisa Helya is not here? Okay, we always have at least one couple in our group and that's them. Next is Gene Bauer. And Fred Bauer. Next, we have Sarah Bracy. And right behind him is Veronica Dwardy. Next, we have Aaron Gary. Justin Time. Getting crowded over there. We look forward to some of you, maybe many of you, perhaps all of you, at some point in time, joining us as a member of one of our boards, commissions, or committees here at the city of Casa Grande. Or maybe even run and be elected for the council as three of our members, Matt, Donna, and the mayor, all three graduates of our Leadership Academy in the past. So, one more round of applause, then guys come up and we're going to get a picture. While they're coming up, I should have mentioned that those members that we do were not going to be here this evening, included Amres Elizabeth Castellanos, Mike Ritter, and Marie Lardis Rosca. They were not able to be with us for sure this evening. I'll make sure they get their shirts.
Congratulations.
Well, we have a plan with the, with our police department and everything with the, with the school districts? Oh, yeah, there's a plan.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and a presence too. All right, thanks and congratulations to all of our graduates. We'll move on to item number three. This is a presentation and discussion on our updated parks master plan. Community Services Director, Danny Gallegos. Danny?
Mayor McFarlane, Mayor Pro Tem Laundre, members of the council. Is this on? There we go.
There you go.
Okay, well, we're one step closer to our master plan adoptions. Hopefully we'll have that done in May. We've been working on this next phase of, of the project with the sustainability of our current parks, the conceptual plan, and some of the funding strategies. I'd like to bring up Michael Schense. He's with Proz Consulting and he's going to go through the presentation on, and let you know where we're at in this next process. So, I'll turn it over to, to Michael.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity once again to kind of give you an update. We are down the homestretch. And so we have covered a lot with you in, hopefully what you've appreciated are digestible chunks from, you know, kind of the overview of the process to the community needs to level of service and connectivity analysis related to your trails. And this, this evening is really going to be, I'll make sure I go the right way, kind of the homestretch before we come back to you in a month or so with regards to the full master plan. So, as we talked about previously, part of the scope of work associated with the master plan was developing some concept plans for properties that you own. And then, of course, a, a big component is the cost estimating for capital improvements, a light touch with regards to funding strategies, next steps, and then any questions that you may have. So, the concept plans, and I think this is mostly for the public's information, but the concept plans are really three in nature. One is the Outdoor Aquatic Center, twelve acres, which is adjacent to the community center. Ed Hooper, Paul Mason Regional Park, one hundred and forty-three acres. And then the Natural Area Park, one hundred and thirty acres. Now, this was originally supposed to be associated with Dave White. However, that Recharge Project is not possible in that location. So, we went ahead and actually did a site-specific master plan without a specific site, just to give you guys a general sense of what that all would look like. So, what is a concept plan? It's really a high-level idea. It's a test fit. You know, it's more about what could happen, not necessarily what will happen. It's flexible. So, I say that because as soon as you start showing pictures of what something is going to be or could be, everybody locks in and says, that's exactly what it's going to look like, that's exactly how it's going to get planned. As you know, there are a lot of steps between now and an actual construction documents before any sort of groundbreaking were to happen. And so these are, are meant to be an idea of what could happen, but they're also very responsive to the community's needs. And, and also very responsive to the fact that your population is going to be approaching a hundred thousand people in about fifteen years. So, we've got to take all of those things into consideration when we talk about these concept plans. So, the first one is the, the Recreation Center Community Park, for lack of a better word. To the north there, you can kind of see where the Recreation Center kind of is right now. Everything in the kind of dotted white outline is kind of the study area associated with this concept plan. So, you know, just kind of, again, this is what's kind of proposed. It kind of gives you a general sense of, you know, North Port Road here, you've got O'Neill Road to the south, housing development adjacent to this, and then, of course, housing and then open space that the city currently does not own. To zoom in on this a little bit further, though, this kind of gives you a general sense of what we're potentially, what's possible there. I think one thing I want to go back to, though, very quickly, is, and this is a really major driver of this site, is this is the entry road into the community center. As you know, right now, it's pretty much a right turn in and a right turn out. And so if you're going to look to further develop this area, this has to change. There's no poss, possible way that you can activate this site anymore and continue to keep this ingress egress in this point. So, what, you know, kind of going fast forward, again, here is the existing recreation center, here is the existing parking. The main component here is the. The main component here is the aquatic center and pool. That would not fit on that small piece of property between the entry road and the community center. We wanted to locate it here to gain synergy and efficiency and effectiveness with regards to the operations, not having necessarily two separate entrances, two locker rooms, and so on and so forth. So, what we have done is located this facility, kind of, you know, on the north side and then the south side of the entry road, but it eliminates this entry road and moves it a little bit further south where you do have an opportunity to better align it with the road coming out of the, the residential development. So, in addition to this facility, we wanted to have a playground and some open turf area. We also were very, very cognizant of these homes, and so what we didn't want to do is activate very heavily anything adjacent to these homes. So, we've really kept the majority of the active development of the, this property closest to, to Pert Road. And so, you kind of have some meandering pathways, some entryway. You do end up with a trail connection, you do end up with a road that comes out to O'Neill as well. And then another opportunity to kind of activate this site is some open turf areas, some restrooms, parking, and of course, a dog park, or an off-leash area. So, this is, this is really kind of taking advantage of this site and the synergies that can be created with the existing recreation center, but, but being very responsive to the fact that you're a community that's going to be 100,000 people in the next 15 years. The one pool that you currently have at Carmac Nat is not going to be enough, and of course, you're going to certainly need to continue to add dog parks along the way. So, the next project is Ed Hooper, Paul, Ed Hooper, Paul Mason. You can see a lot of open space. This is 143 acres of possibilities. As you know, this is the area that's currently activated, and then this, of course, is, is the, the equestrian area, rodeo area. So, what does this look like in the future, possibly look like in the future? This is a major sports complex development. So, I think the, the key to recognize here is that we're trying to be responsive to the fact that your community is going to continue to be very family-oriented. Your community is going to grow by 40-some thousand people, and you do not have enough athletic fields going forward. So, in addition to the athletic fields that are here today, we're adding an additional, you know, I guess cloverleaf of baseball fields or diamond fields that can be utilized for adults and kids. You have parking, you have obviously roadways. The key to this kind of site is to ensure that you have parking dispersed throughout the entire site. You can't locate it in any one specific area. You also need additional restroom facilities in, in, throughout the facility. And then, one of the things in terms of level of services is we identified multi-use fields. I think this is important. Yes, they're, they might be dotted in terms of our line just for configuration, but they are, they're multi-use fields, so they can be used for soccer, they can be used for football, they can be used for flag football, touch football, tackle football, lacrosse, if that becomes a need. And the idea here is to recognize that these are truly multi-use fields. They're not designated only for soccer. And so, that's important. There's 12 of those, four baseball fields, an open turf area, playground, kind of a destination location, opportunities for an amphitheater or a stage. We're kind of keeping a parachute landing in this area, but then, you know, potentially, and this is not necessarily meant to be the amount of a space that's necessary, it's just something that we need to take into consideration. But then tennis courts and pickleball. Pickleball is continuing to be a growing sport. By percentage, it is the fastest-growing sport in the country. However, tennis has also grown significantly since COVID. In fact, tennis has added close to 6 million participants and grown by over 33% nationally since COVID. So, again, kind of being responsive to community needs as well as trends. As you can see, this, this is a regional park, this is a regional sports complex. It is likely that this kind of facility would need to be done in phases because it will be expensive. So expensive that we're not incorporating it into the capital improvement plan simply because we want to make sure that as part of the capital improvement plan, we're doing something that's realistic for you. This is very aspirational in nature, but it's also something that is going to be needed at some point in your future. And then the last area is that natural area wetlands. So, again, this was something that was envisioned by, you know, close to Dave White, but this is similar to some projects that are in the valley, whether it be in Chandler or potentially be in Gilbert. The idea is, is to take advantage of the recharge project in the basins that are created by it and create a natural area. This is also being responsive to community needs, creates a lot of opportunities for walking paths, creates an opportunities for a passive natural area, and even the activated areas that we're talking about to the south would really be parking, restrooms, maybe a demonstration garden, and maybe a destination location, what we would call kind of a nature play, not what you would see typically in terms of, you know, a modular, modular kind of playground that's multicolor. This would certainly be something that would blend into this site. So, again, the idea here is to connect it, not just, you know, the opportunities to connect it with your, any sort of public road, but to ensure that we connect it with your trail system as well, since this is certainly going to be an opportunity, especially on, maybe not necessarily today's like today, but with the wind, but weather like today would be an awesome opportunity to go out. You could do some bird watching, you could take a hike, you know, just really opportunities to get outside and enjoy the kind of weather that we get in the, hopefully in the fall, winter, and spring. So, I, I guess I'll stop there and see if there are any questions, because that's one big chunk, and then before we get into numbers.
Questions, anyone?
Okay, great.
I think we're all pretty familiar with most of it. The, the wetlands piece, maybe not so much, but, but the others.
Okay, fantastic. Great. Thank you. So, cost estimating. So, of course, this is where we start to talk about things in numbers and reality, right? If we put together a master plan and didn't, you didn't, we weren't responsive to the question that you would ask, which is, how much is all of this going to cost? It would kind of feel incomplete. So, here are some of the overall assumptions. All projects must be financially viable, or possible, within the next 15 years. All projects likely to be implemented are included in the actual plan. Projects must be consistent with other planning efforts and projections, and this also, these do not include, as I mentioned, the aspirational projects associated with Ed Hooper and the new natural area park. So, other assumptions, costs are intended to be a rough order of magnitude and based on park and rec amenities only. There are also some significant cost escalators built into years six through 10 and years 11 plus, so 35% additional cost built into any, anything in years six through 10, a 55% additional cost built into years 11 plus. And then, of course, city staff should continue to evaluate cost estimating information. As you know, if we had put together a plan like this five years ago, the cost estimates would have been very quickly outdated. Our hope is that actually being able to provide you cost estimates today as things start to hopefully cool down on the construction market, that the pricing is a lot more valid than, say, if this plan would have been done in 2019 or 2020. So, some, you know, improvement plan methodology, there's two buckets. Really sustainable is lifecycle replacement. So, this is just taking care of what you already have within your existing system. And as we've talked about previously, you have a pretty extensive community services, parks, and recreation system. You have a lot of acreage, you have a lot of amenities, you have a lot of facilities that, that it, over time, are going to have to be reinvested in. Additionally, then, you have visionary projects that expand upon your existing system that's responsive to community needs today, but also the projected population. This could be doing things such as adding to your existing footprint, adding park acreage, but it, adding trails, which is a big driver, as well as then potentially just adding features to existing parks. So, sticker shock, right? So, I will break this down, but I figure I might as well start with this and work my way backwards. So, you have in the sustainable bucket, which is just lifecycle replacement over the next 15 years. Now, granted, there are a lot of cost escalators built into this, as well as some soft costs, but we're talking about 120 million over the course of 15 years, just taking care of what you already have. Now, lifecycle replacement doesn't happen in one year. It doesn't happen in just years one through five. Your system's built at all different stages, and things last a different lifecycle. So, such things as a ramada or a picnic shelter might last you 20 to 25 years. A playground might last you 15. So, there's always this staggering of replacement that takes place, but the other thing to recognize is that it never stops. It is always going to be there. It's no different than roads, streetlights, signage, you name it, it always is going to be there. 60% of this total capital improvement cost estimating plan is related to lifecycle replacement. 40% is related to growing your system. Now, keep in mind, there are significant cost escalators built into this. This is not reflective of today's dollars. So, let's look at it a different way. You have, we, here, we just kind of showed you, you know, the general understanding of 122 million associated with parks, 24 million facilities, 21 million trails. Yes, we backed that number down from the connectivity analysis simply because we're proposing decomposed granite trails that could be paved later through opportunities with the development community, as opposed to paved trails right off the bat. And then, of course, you have some planning efforts, and then all those soft costs. This way gives you an understanding of where are you spending the money. 61%, almost 62% is on parks, 12 and a half percent is on facilities, so that's brick and mortar, another 10 and a half percent on trails, and then really about 14 to 15% associated with soft costs. That's all design, construction documents, the whole smash. So, let's look at it in five-year segments. And this, I think, is very responsive to the fact that, number one, the bond failed last November, and number two, that you have to identify and work to get funding strategies. And that doesn't happen overnight. And so, what we wanted to do was ensure that the first five years, the next five years was not, we just didn't want to front-load that. We wanted to put the emphasis on lifecycle replacement in your parks at about 2 million, and really focus on the community's number one need, which was trails, at about 7.2 million. So, of this entire plan, only 6% of it is in the next five years. But again, it's being responsive to taking care of what you already have, as well as expanding your trail system. And then, kind of lastly, if we were just to look at the first five years and breaking it down by project type, the majority of the money is going to trails, the second amount, highest percentage is going to parks. So, again, I think what we're trying to do is set you up for success. We're not trying to say, let's fund 50 million, let's fund 75 million in the next five years. Let's fund what's realistic in the next five years and allow you then the opportunity for the out-years to start to identify the different funding strategies that are necessary to make those projects happen. I think one thing that I do want to point out, if I can go back, though, is keep in mind that there is going to be a big bill that comes due right here, when it comes to sustainable projects associated with parks. It's just going to be a big number that you need to take into consideration as you start to think about taking care of your park system in the out-year. So, really, 2028, 2029, 2030, I know it seems like a long way away, but it'll be here before you know it. So, the Recreation Center Community Park is included. I think it's recognized that, you know, it's spread out over the cost of, over the course of, you know, basically 15 years, but it's, it's $50 million, taking into account the escalators, and that's 26% of the total CIP that you're seeing. So, I think that's important, just to recognize. All right, so funding strategies, again, grants, your lifecycle replacement, about the half a million dollars that you guys get annually to reinvest in your system, it's only going to go so far. You know, city capital improvement, general funding, really teeing up the general obligation bond, again, recreation impact fees, and of course, partnerships. So, our next steps, development of Strategic Action Plan, we're going to present to, for hopeful, recommended for approval, define our master plan to the Community Services Advisory Board at the end of this month, around, I think, 27th, and then be back to you, kind of in a work session to summarize everything in May, and then seek your adoption at some point shortly after, whether it be late May, early June, depending upon how it fits on your agenda. All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments, suggestions?
Just a suggestion on the maps, maybe on the multipurpose fields, we don't line them like soccer fields.
Fair enough.
Okay. I've got a few comments.
Understood. Fully.
Several, yeah, several football people who were, all they saw was soccer fields, so.
Yes, understood.
Matt?
I don't know, a question for you or Danny, maybe, with the maintenance operation of all this new park stuff, I'm sure you'll have to plan that into the budget, but how do you, I mean, I'm sure you have some formula or something per square foot, acre?
Actually, Danny, I can, I can answer that. So, we are going to incorporate into the plan a, an operational assessment.
Oh, good.
Related to programs and services and maintenance, give you some guidelines associated with the amount of staffing levels and the amount of total dollars that you need, almost like on a per-acre basis, but also based on kind of park type, so that we're not just, so athletic fields, what it costs to maintain them against what it would cost to maintain a pocket park to a community park, a neighborhood park.
And plus, you said programming as well?
Yes.
Okay. And one other interesting thing I heard, which looked neat, and I know, again, very conceptual, but like an outdoor amphitheater type thing looked like it'd be a nice place.
You mentioned it.
You did, I, no, you mentioned it, but I think that's something that would be good at some point in the future. It's just going to be how, how do we pay for it and how do we upkeep it, so?
Yeah, special events was cer, was one of those high priority program and service needs. So, that's why that was incorporated.
And I'm really happy you got the trails. There was a lot of trail connections and.
Yes. Got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Labaner?
So, the Hooper project is not part of those 198 million, am I correct?
It is not right now. The price tag's pretty significant, and partly because that is a lot of raw land that needs to be developed.
Can you go to the slide that had?
That, that project?
The trails on it, please.
This one?
No. The cost.
Oh, the cost, I'm sorry, yes.
So, that's $7 million for trails. Those are existing trails or expanding ones?
That's expanding trails.
Okay. So, is any of that 7 million, any of the trails out at CG Mountain?
Any of the, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Is any of that 7 million you're talking about there, out at CG Mountain?
No, there's some, yeah, there's some small segments that we could use in the future, but it's not, those aren't our priority trails at this point. We have other priority trails that we have in the master plan.
They're part of the maintenance, they're part of the sustainability.
They would be more of the sustainability.
Aren't they part of the sustainability piece that you had?
Correct, yes. We wouldn't add, those would be the last trail segments we would add and have other priority trails before that.
So, as I look at this, this looks like a 20-year plan, am I correct?
15.
15. There's no plan to expand any fields during the next 15 years, but there are plans to expand trails, am I correct?
Correct. Correct.
And you've heard from the community, there's a greater need for trails rather than ball fields when we're, the number one complaint I hear is the lack of ball fields available for teams.
It is. When it comes to the, the highest priority needs of your community, when it came to amenities, it was paved trails, it was hiking trails, it was looped trails, it was, you know, even mountain biking trails. They were, that dominated the high priority list and it did not matter where you lived in the community and it really didn't matter age segment as well. It doesn't mean that, the thing is, is I think your community's going to grow. So your footprint of almost everything that you have is at some point going to have to expand. It's just that we have to align the priorities of the capital improvement plan with what your community is so that they desire the most.
And do you think it was clear to those taking the survey that CG Mountain is a part of the trail system or did they not identify that?
I believe so because we had very specific questions related to mountain biking trails.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Go ahead, Bob.
I'm going to get on my soapbox. So I, I brought this issue up before and I apologize for, for beating it to death, but I, I strongly feel that we have a diamond in the rough in our city, in the Santa Cruz Wash that runs across the north side of our, of our city. It runs completely from the east side to the west side. It's already bordering Rotary Park and Dave White Park. And I think it, it's part of your natural area that you have set up in, in this plan. I think it borders it or flows into it or something, the wetlands that you have on here. I can see that someday as similar to the Indian Bend Wash system and park system up in Scottsdale. I believe that we are remiss if we don't start putting things in place that someday, that's our intent of developing that area. And I think our, our obligation at this point is to start including it into plans like this just as mentioned. I mean, I, I don't have any idea what dollar amount to put in that, but I think we as a city and this, I'll, I'll look at Larry for, I, I think we need to start establishing some, some rules, some right-of-way projects. I have said before, my, my nightmare is to look at that thing 20 years from now and see cement culverts because that drainage way is going to have to be maintained in some form. And I think it, it so has the potential of being a connected park and trail system with a repairian feel to it. We've seen it recently flowing quite heavily. I know we've had a wet winter, but heck, we've had a river running through our city sometimes. And I, I think we are not mentioning it at, at, at our fault. I think we need to include it in these documents and start talking about it. So, and with that, I'll step down from my.
Councilman Huddleston, we, Michael and I did talk about it since the last meeting, so we put a segment in there to have that discussion on the Santa Cruz Wash as part of that segment. So when we see the, the final product, it will be included in discussion.
It will.
It will have, be a discussion because these were, today's topic is really about the parks themselves. And I guess I can understand where you're coming from as far as that wash being more of a park than an actual wash or a trail, but we can mention that in the.
It's kind of a combination, I think, Danny. It's a park and a trail, you know what I mean? So, and it connects all of our parks and it connects all of our trails. So it's kind of an integral part of the city and his example of Scottsdale's drainage system is a perfect one. Whether it will ever look like that or not, who knows, but at least we can put it in the plans.
Right.
And I think that's a good idea.
Well, I appreciate it, Danny. Thank you.
It is called out in the master plan. So what you see here is a summary. Every, every project in the, in the master plan has detail to it. The trails very specifically relate to the prioritization that we showed you the last time, but the addition in particular around Santa Cruz Wash, after your feedback, we've incorporated that into our mapping as well as the capital improvements associated with that 7.2 million.
So that Santa Cruz Wash would be like, or Ed Hooper Park, we don't have any funding for it. So, but it's on the wish list.
Thank you.
It looks great and I love the fields. I agree with Bob as well. I live close to that, the water and goes down Dave White all the way and floods areas over there. We definitely have to look into that, but as we do grow, we expand, I believe those fields, everything's going to come into play for our youth, for our youth and the different things that we have going on in the city as we grow, where it's going to be needed, even with the trails. I believe we had to maintain the trails, keep up the work with the trails, improve it, get better, get more in as well as fields. Fields, multi-use fields, I believe was the terminology on there was multi-use. So we can use soccer, football, whatever it may be as we think about our youth down the road, you know, and so.
I mean, we're running out of fields for Little League too. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of across the board in terms of youth sports. And when I was at the, at the opening ceremony of the Little League and they had turned away 10 T-ball teams, which means there's a whole lot of kids coming up in, in this youth baseball. And there were 2,000 people there, 600 kids and their parents and grandparents and siblings. And it was packed. And those are the, really the only baseball fields that we have for youth, for our Little League system. And I know you and I have had this conversation, Danny, and we're looking at trying to expand that even at their current facility. So there's some temporary fixes, but as we grow, obviously that football, youth football, all of that is going to put some pressure on our system.
It already has.
Yeah. Donna?
Just a couple of quick comments. You know, one of the things that I, I'm most proud of is that Community Services Department, when we're talking birth all the way to those of us that are now seniors and seasoned citizens, we've got to have a broad base of activities. And I appreciate the fact that when we're talking about having different fields and having different uses and stuff, I know that those of us that have been here a while, we saw some of the issues around tennis and pickleball and we needed to work on that so that we could accommodate both of the groups. And I think that we have to do that with the football fields and the soccer fields. So I, I think that that's, you know, something that we can still be proud of. It's a lot of money and we probably 20, 25 years ago, we're saying the same thing when we were developing, you know, Castle Grand Mountain. I remember being out there with shovel in hand and we're like, we're never going to be able to do this. And we did, so we just have to accommodate and prepare for that. But I do appreciate the fact because I have had people contact, you know, several of us about the football fields. And I also want to mention the BMX, you know, that's a whole new territory for our city to have, you know, the bike, you know, bike area. And, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, Danny has met, you know, the skate and the skate park. So I think that we, we're on the right track, we just have to prepare as Bob said, so I appreciate, this is a, this is a guide.
And find some money.
Yes. I think the, the best part about this is you own a lot of land. There are a lot of communities that face these challenges and don't know where to start because you don't have the land. The fact that you have the land gives you a, a really strong fighting chance at being able to move projects along much more quickly than if you did not have the amount of acreage that you have available to you.
And the last thing I just mentioned because of what Jeff had said, I think that, you know, it is our responsibility as a community to get the word out there and make sure that we have people's opinions. And that's why it's so important that when we have these surveys and we have this outreach, that people participate because we only can do and plan for what those that stand before us and tell us what they want. And I know that we've done that and I know that we had a lot of opportunities, but it just goes to show the more that we are transparent and ask for those opinions, the more it's going to help us do the planning. Thank you.
Great. Bob?
Just one last comment. Needing and wanting more fields, more trails, more parks, good problems to have. I mean, our community is very involved and, and we're proud of that and support the endeavor. Danny?
And just to remind people that they also voted down the bond here recently, that we could have had some money to do these things that we're talking about today. So just to remind everybody that if we float that out there again, might be an opportunity to rally and support the need for some of these, you know, these features that we're talking about. All right.
I do have one more comment, Mayor. One of the things, Danny, that maybe we can look at before this final proposal is looking at the, what would be the cost to add lights to existing schools that have fields that could be utilized at dark if we had lights out?
Certainly.
I do, I do know at the high school, the youth football, I mean, the use of the lights is pretty minimal compared to the cost, but all the infrastructure's in place and what would it cost to partner with the schools to do the infrastructure, to create the lights for the city to utilize those fields? So we have multi-use fields, schools use them during daylight, community uses them at night, may solve some of our problems to get us through fields until we get more money.
Elementary, elementary school district too, not just high school district.
There's 12, you know, all the campuses in the city.
Mayor Protem Lavinder, just to give you an idea of what a cost of a replacement costs, for example, we received a, a recent quote for Paul, Paul Mason, to replace just those lights alone on those ball fields costs $720,000. So it just gives you an idea of what that looks like. So partnering with.
That's just for the lights?
That's just for the light replacements.
No pole, just the light?
No, the pole's already there. So, and those aren't the highest level. So it just gives you an idea of what those are, but partnering with the school district would, would benefit both, both entities if we were able to accomplish that.
When we redid CG Middle, I know I talked to the current superintendent, she's not there anymore, and maybe this is a topic to bring back up with Dr. Leckie, but those fields behind CG Middle, I had suggested that we could make baseball, football fields there if they put in lighting, that the city could maintain the fields, meaning there's some, some cooperation there or collaboration. Because we have a lot of space, it's just how do we utilize it better?
And I think that we can look at a short-term fix and even if it's just on Saturdays during the day, it's a possibility.
And I have reminded all, all the superintendents that their facilities are also public facilities.
All the superintendents. You haven't reminded me yet, sir.
Were you there when I reminded them? So anyway, I think we have a lot of opportunity. We just need to collaborate and, and work together on making it happen. So, not so that it's an expense to the schools per se, but you know, if the city can help with maintenance and, and ongoing costs, then that makes it maybe feasible for the schools to cooperate with the city and make these facilities available. Because I think we have a lot of resources, we just need to use them better. And then develop some new ones too, so.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny. All right. So we'll stand adjourned until seven o'clock and we'll start the regular council meeting. Thank you, everybody.